I want to thank everybody for being here. This is an exciting night for not only myself as getting sworn in and being mayor for four more years, but we've got a new council member, Joe Longoria. We're excited to welcome him here tonight, as well as our incumbent council members and our existing council members. So, just want to thank everybody for being here and all our volunteers. Glad to see the Thurman family finally made it, so they're here, so we can start. And, so at this point, I want to welcome the City of Milton Police Chaplain, Renko Brahma, who will lead us into a invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Looks like we have a congregation tonight, so please feel free to join me in prayer. Almighty Father, we begin tonight's meeting by honoring you as the God who watches over our community and all of its citizens, and we're grateful. We confess our need for your grace and protection upon each and every business and household in our city, and pray that this year you keep everyone safe and healthy and prosperous. We pray for your grace and protection on our police and fire departments, and ask that you endow them with wisdom, strength, and courage as they carry out their duties. We pray for the mayor and city council as they begin their new term, that you will give them wisdom from above, the ability to govern above reproach, and the vision to make this city progress and prosper. And so, tonight, we invoke your presence at this meeting. Guide our council members in the decisions they need to make, in their stewardship of the budget, and in governing the vision for this city. God, you ask of us to humble ourselves, to forsake all wickedness, to seek your face and call upon your name. Our prayer is that our city leaders be examples of people who place the Lord their God at the center of all they do, and may your name be respected, honored, cherished, and worshipped in this city. I pray in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Can I like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Wednesday, January 6th, 2010, to order? And at this moment, I'd like to also recognize a special friend, a guest here, Mayor Mike Bodker, has come to visit with us during the ceremony. So, thanks, Mike. Thanks for being here, Mayor of Johns Creek. Will City Clerk please sound the first item?
Administer out of the office to elected officials. Mayor Joe Lockwood will be sworn in by Judge Brian Hansford, and also Councilman Karen Thurman will be sworn in by Judge Brian Hansford.
Step forward. Want to ask if my family would stand up here with me?
Please repeat after me. I, Joe Lockwood, do solemnly swear...
I, Joe Lockwood, do solemnly swear...
...that I will faithfully perform the duties of mayor of this city...
That I will faithfully perform the duties of mayor of this city...
...and that I will support and defend the charter thereof...
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof...
...as well as the Constitution and laws...
As well as the Constitution and laws...
...of the state of Georgia...
Of the state of Georgia...
...and the United States of America...
And the United States of America.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Would I ask the Councilmember Thurman, if you want to step forward?
I'd like my husband Mark and my daughter Clarence to come up here with me.
Please repeat after me. I, Susan Thurman, do solemnly swear...
I, Karen Thurman, do solemnly swear...
...that I will faithfully perform the duties of council member...
That I will faithfully perform the duties of council member...
...of this city, and that I will support and defend...
Of this city, and I will support and defend...
...the charter thereof...
The charter thereof...
...as well as the Constitution and laws...
As well as the Constitution and laws...
...of the state of Georgia...
Of the state of Georgia...
...and the United States of America...
And the United States of America.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, I think we have Councilmember Lusk being sworn in by Judge Barry Zinnrum. You raise your hand.
I, William Lusk...
I, William Lusk...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...and affirm...
And affirm...
...that I will faithfully perform...
That I will faithfully perform...
...the duties of council member...
The duties of council member...
...of this city...
Of this city...
...and that I will support and defend...
And I will support and defend...
...the charter thereof...
The charter thereof...
...as well as the Constitution and laws...
As well as the Constitution and laws...
...of the state of Georgia...
Of the state of Georgia...
...and the United States of America...
And the United States of America. So help you God. Congratulations.
You need my lessons?
No, I was just reading. I read every document.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. If I could ask Councilmember Joe Longoria to step forward.
My family's looking at me like I'm not going to call them up here, but I am.
You win, you have the most...
That's right.
All right. Give your right hand.
I, Joe Longoria...
I, Joe Longoria...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...and affirm...
And affirm...
...that I will faithfully perform...
That I will faithfully perform...
...the duties of council member...
The duties of council member...
...of this city...
Of this city...
...and that I will support and defend...
And I will support and defend...
...the charter thereof...
The charter thereof...
...as well as the Constitution and laws...
As well as the Constitution and laws...
...of the state of Georgia...
Of the state of Georgia...
...and the United States of America...
And the United States of America.
At this point, I'm going to ask the council to step down, and all the families of council members that are here, as well as the judges, for a group picture.
Yep.
If I can get everybody's attention... Can you see? If I can get everybody's attention, and we'll get started again. I guess I'm kind of messed up. The bar...
That's fine. It's okay.
Okay, if I could have everybody get their seats, and council step forward, we'll get back to business.
Oh. I just married that suit. That was good. I love that.
Yeah.
My blood pressure was fine just a second ago, and it just...
Susan Thurman. Yeah.
I think people are liking... They're like, "Oh, it means..." It's kind of cool. Is that honorific? Maybe you should have a resolution. You should have a reception. Every...
Every...
Every March.
All right. I don't know where Allen is, and if Susan will step forward, we'll be ready to go. Okay, our next item is the election of mayor pro temp. And I'd like to open it up for nominations for mayor pro temp. Does anybody have a nomination or a second? I'd like to make the nomination of Burke Hewitt as mayor pro temp. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
I have a second by Councilmember Lusk. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Janice. Thank you. Okay, unanimous. Will the city clerk please call roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, mayor and council. I would be happy to call roll for the January 6th, 2010 regular meeting. However, I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Additionally, those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearings or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city's clerk staff prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. When you hear the bell, you have thirty seconds to complete your remarks. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided however that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited. So please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood?
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman?
Here.
Councilmember Julie Zoner Bailey?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk?
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt?
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria?
Here.
Councilmember Alan Tartt?
Here.
Would everyone please rise and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I just want to welcome everybody here. I want to thank both the families, our citizens, our volunteers, and our staff. Tonight's a special night, or this year's going to be a special year. I'm excited. I'm proud to be reelected as the mayor of City Milton, serving you for the next four years. So I will commit to doing the best job I can in the citizens' interest. We're excited to have new councilmember Joe Longoria. Welcome him here. I'm excited to have a couple other incumbent councilmembers, councilmember Lusk and councilmember Thurman, that were reelected. We're excited to continue the good work. And I'm also excited to be here with councilmember Bailey and councilmember Tartt to move forward with our city. Another thing, I want to really give Chris a big hand. Chris Lagerblom, our city manager. Over the last, I'd say, six months, he's wore a bunch of different hats and had a really huge undertaking. And as most of you know, we have elected to move forward on our own and have severed our contract with CH2M Hill. And as I've told everybody, CH2M Hill has done a great job guiding us to where we are. I don't think we could have done it...we probably could have done it, but it would have been a lot tougher. So they've done a good job. They've worked with us to transition into our own city. You'll, as the citizens, you may see, we'll welcome a few new faces around here. But the other good news is you're also going to see a lot of the same faces around here. And I think everybody's just has kind of a beginning of the year renewed spirit and is excited to work for the city of Milton. And I also want to say that, again, I got to just tell you how much work Chris has put into this. He's done a great job. And he's had to make a lot of decisions. And just want to make sure everyone knows that each one of these major decisions, he has worked through the council and myself as the mayor, and we have supported him. And I just, my door is always open. If there's any questions on any decisions, whether Chris's door is too, on any decision that I make as the mayor, as our council makes, or that our city managers make, our doors are open if you want to come discuss them. Because I can guarantee you, we've all worked together and there's a good reason for that. So again, I just want to take a second and give a round of applause for everything Chris has done to get us to this new year and ready to start. So, thanks for... Thank you, Mayor Botker, for joining us tonight. Will the city clerk please sound the next item?
Approval of meeting agenda. This is agenda item number ten dash one zero one five. And we are also adding an executive session to that agenda for potential litigation.
Okay. Are there any other items? Okay. Do I have a motion and a second?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the meeting agenda. Agenda item number one zero dash one zero one five is read.
I second the motion.
Motion by councilmember Lusk, second by councilmember Bailey.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and the city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussions on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and turn it in to our city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or city council members in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes for remarks. Do we have any public comment cards?
Yes, sir, we have two. First is Al Trevillian.
Good evening. My name is Al Trevillian. Nineteen seventy-five Birmingham Road in Milton. During the recent campaign, I proposed formation of an economic development commission. I still believe that's a good idea and I recommend it to you, the new council for the city of Milton. This commission would be charged with attracting quality businesses to fill the many empty storefronts we see throughout the city. I'm hoping that some one of you will pick up on this idea and carry it through. Ronald Reagan once said, "It's amazing how much work we can get done when we don't worry about who gets the credit for it." I think that still holds true. This commission should be charged with determining what type of retail businesses the citizens of Milton would like to see in our community. They should be authorized to deal with prospective businesses and have the authority to pass on incentives to attract those businesses to our city with the, within the guidelines established by the council. Their mission is to find and attract viable, long-term businesses for the good of the city of Milton. It's important to remember that the viability of a commission like this is critical in the selection of its members. I would recommend that each councilmember select a member, not necessarily from their district. Qualifications of the individual is much more important than the geographical location. Ideally, the member should have experience in retail operations or experience in location of corporate offices. I hope you can give this consideration, this idea, due consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
In the second, we have Mayor Michael Botker.
Good evening, Mayor Lockwood, councilmembers Thurman, Zoner Bailey, Lusk, Hewitt, Longoria, and Tartt. I bring you greetings from the city of Johns Creek and congratulations on those who are reelected. We wish you all the greatest of success and we look forward to continuing our strong partnership together in the new year.
Thank you. And I just want to add a comment. I don't see your, Mayor Botker's chair, but he had a special chair here tonight. When they, I attended one of the early meetings at Johns Creek and sat in the hard chairs that they had out there. And when they asked if I had any comments or suggestions, I, of course, raised my hand and said that their chairs weren't very comfortable. And so I had to make sure that we had a big, soft, cushy one for him so he wouldn't complain about our chairs here. But again, thank you for coming. And does that conclude public comment?
Yes.
Okay. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please sound the items?
Item number one is approval over December fourteenth, two thousand nine special called Meeting Minutes. Agenda item number ten dash one dash zero one six. Item number two, approval of the December twenty-first, two thousand nine regular minute meetings. Agenda item number ten dash one zero one seven.
Okay. Do I have a motion and a second?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by councilmember Hewitt, a second by councilmember Thurman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, let's move on to our reports and presentations. Will the city clerk please sound the items?
A proclamation for the Stacy Ann Bo Memorial Fund, presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
And I believe Mr. Trevillian is going to step up and he would come forward while I read this and accept this.
Whereas, the government of the city of Milton is founded upon active citizen involvement and relies on the community for establishing a vision of how the various city departments will evolve during these formative years. And whereas, over the past few years, Milton Fire Department has developed a unique skill in its Technical Large Animal Rescue Unit.
You know what? I've got the wrong stickers here. Stay up here, Alan.
Whereas, over the past few years, Milton Fire Department has developed a unique skill in its Technical Large Animal Emergency Rescue Unit, or T-Layer, which has served the community and the surrounding jurisdiction in affecting the rescue of numerous trapped or stranded animals, including several horses rescued in Sandy Springs Hunt Cliff subdivision during the September two thousand and nine floods. And whereas, community support for this highly specialized function has proven an essential partner in bringing the T-Layer unit to the current level of proficiency, including the purchase of a life-size horse mannequin, which is an essential training tool. And whereas, in support of this essential training mannequin, affectionately known as the Lucky Horse, the Stacy Ann Bo Memorial Fund has made a generous contribution towards the fire department's purchase of Lucky, thereby positively contributing to the further formation of Milton's unique character. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council, council of the city of Milton, hereby proclaim and applaud the Stacy Ann Bo Memorial Fund, Nancy and Ralph Bo, and its benefactors for this generous support and to urge all our citizens to join in the celebration. This is given under my hand and seal the city of Milton, Georgia, on the sixth day of January two thousand and ten.
Okay, next proclamation, if I can have Dr. Mize come up here. Dr. Mize is the owner of Little River Animal Hospital. And they had, had a fair and a fundraiser and had at his hospital a couple of, what, a couple of months ago? And in fact, I was lucky enough to attend and had to sit in the chairs and get the pies thrown at me. And after we got, along with Dr. Mize, and after we got the pies thrown at us, then we got to walk over and the fire department got the hoses out and sprayed us all off. So that was rather fun. But in all seriousness, I want to thank Dr. Mize because they did this fundraiser to raise money to donate to the city of Milton for, for this horse Lucky, this Lucky Horse. So today, I want to present Dr. Mize and Little River Animal Hospital with this proclamation. The city of Milton is founded upon active citizen involvement and relies on the community for establishing a vision of how the various city departments will evolve during these formative years of our government. And whereas, over the past few years, the Milton Fire Department has developed a unique skill in its Technical Large Animal Emergency Rescue Unit, or T-Layer, that has served the community and the surrounding jurisdiction in affecting the rescue of numerous trapped or stranded animals, including several horses rescued during the September two thousand and nine floods. Whereas, community support for this highly specialized function has proven an essential partner in bringing the T-Layer unit to the current level of proficiency, including the purchase of life-size horse mannequin, which is an essential training tool. And whereas, each year, the Little River Animal Hospital conducts a fundraiser for various philanthropic purposes in the North Fulton area. And whereas, in support of the T-Layer unit and its need for this training mannequin, affectionately known as Lucky the Horse, the Little River Animal Hospital has made a generous donation towards the fire department's purchase of Lucky, thereby positively contributing to the further formation of Milton's unique character. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council, the Silton, city of Milton, hereby proclaim and applaud the Little River Animal Hospital and Dr. J. Mize as the charity's benefactor for this generous support. And I do urge all citizens to join in the celebration. This is given under my hand and seal of the city of Milton, Georgia, on the sixth day of January two thousand and ten. At this point, I'd like to ask the council to come, come down and we can take a picture. And if Bailey wants to come back up and we get a picture of everybody. Jason, maybe we'll put it on our website and all that. Again, I want to thank our citizens and Mr. Trevillian and for accepting that proclamation. Also, I want to thank Dr. Mize again for, you know, as some of our businesses who are supporting Milton. So that's one of the good things we've got going here is active businesses and citizens. And just want to, again, tell you guys how much we appreciate that. All right, if our city clerk wants to, please call the next item.
This is under first presentation. Item number one is RZ zero nine dash zero five. Twelve six four five Birmingham Highway, State Route three seventy-two. McRae and Stoltz, Inc. is requesting a resignment from C-one Community Business to C-one Community Business to change the use from an antique store to general commercial use salon within the existing structure. This is agenda item number ten dash one zero one eight.
Okay. Do I have a motion and a second?
Mayor, I move to approve the first presentation item.
Second.
Okay, again, a motion by councilmember Tartt, a second by councilmember Hewitt.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Okay. We don't have any public hearings tonight and we don't have any zoning agenda items, so I'm going to move on to unfinished business. The city clerk, please sound the first item.
First item is approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter Four Municipal Court by adding a new section entitled "A Pre-Trial Intervention and Diversion Program" to be administered by the city of Milton Solicitor's Office for the purpose of ending... by the City of Milton Solicitor's Office for the purpose of ending the repeat offenses of theft by shoplifting, underage possession of alcohol, disorderly conduct, and other miscellaneous misdemeanor and traffic offenses through the education of eligible defendants and for other purposes." This is agenda item number zero nine dash one zero zero five. It was first presented on December twenty first, two thousand nine, originally presented by Fran Shonfall.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For those of you who do not know me, I'm Fran Shonfall, and I'm the solicitor for the court here in the city of Milton. And this is agenda item zero nine, one thousand and five, and it is called "The Pre-Trial Diversion Program," and its main purpose really here for the city is to allow our first offenders to have a program if they qualify that they can go through to get their record expunged at the end of the process so they don't carry around a criminal conviction for a minor, relatively minor offense throughout their lives. And the way the program is set up or proposed at this time is that when someone is arrested or charged and comes to court, and I review or the court reviews their record and sees that they have no prior criminal offenses, they're usually youthful offenders, underage teenage, you know, teenagers, eighteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen years old, who go to the mall or go to Walmart and take an item without paying for it. It's worth a very little amount money-wise, or they'll get arrested for having a small amount of marijuana, or they'll be at a party and be arrested because they were drinking and they're under the age of twenty-one. Things like that where they wind up getting arrested that day or that evening, and they want to come to court and see if there's anything they could do to keep their record clean. So we're going to establish this program with the intent for them to go through the program and complete certain terms and conditions, pay a fine, undergo alcohol drug evaluations if necessary, undergo therapy for cognitive skills or psychological counseling for defining the underlying root of why they took the item at the Walmart or whatnot, and successfully complete some community service normally within the city. And at that point, after a year, the clerk will rerun their history, and if they have not gotten into any additional trouble and they've successfully gone through and done everything as mandated by the court, we'll allow them to file an expungement, which will give them the opportunity to take that arrest and take it off their criminal history so they won't carry that around for the rest of their lives. And I think it's a win-win for both the city and obviously for the offender because the offender gets the benefit of clearing their record if they successfully complete the terms and conditions, and the city gets the benefit of hopefully keeping that person from committing further offenses in the city or otherwise down the road, educate that offender as to the proper way to conduct their lives and make a positive change and not repeat that behavior again. We will collect a fine, the city will get the entire amount of the money that is collected for the program, and the program will also be supervised by both the court and the probation department, which is normally the case with all our other cases. So there really won't be any additional personnel or time or effort that needs to be put into this program for it to exist here in the city. So I'm here to answer any questions that anyone may have about the proposed program.
Do we have any questions from the council for Ms. Shonfall?
I have a couple.
Sure.
How are you doing?
Fine, thank you.
Good. One of the questions I have is, is this program being implemented in other jurisdictions? And I'm particularly interested if data are available to show that this actually results in less offenses in the future, or is better than going ahead and giving them whatever punishment that they are entitled to under the law? Is this type of voluntary approach, does it result in better compliance in the future? I mean...
Okay, I don't have hard and fast data.
And I'll tell you why I'm asking that.
Okay.
Because I think this can send a positive message and it can also send a negative message, especially when you're talking to the fact that most of this involves our youth. And I don't want it to sound like in Milton you have a blank check to make first offenses as long as you go through some behavioral type of training and type of stuff after you commit these offenses. And I just don't want it to send that message. So I'm wondering, you know, what data we have to suggest this actually is better.
I don't have any hard and fast data as you are requesting. However, I've been a prosecutor both in DeKalb County, the city of Alpharetta, and here for over twenty years. And in my experience, I have found that those who are genuinely interested, eligible, and motivated to go through a program such as this wind up very successful. Of course, there are going to be instances where we will have somebody who is in the program on probation under the diversion commit another subsequent offense, in which case, the court has the ability to bring that person back before it and take away the first offender, take away the pre-trial diversion and enter the original offense as a conviction on that person's record, and then also obviously punish the offender for the secondary or subsequent offense. So that's the motivation essentially. They, it's a double-edged sword, and I probably didn't adequately explain that when I first started, that it's great if the person is motivated to get through the program and is able to complete all the terms and conditions successfully, but it's really bad if they screw up because they will be back before the judge, they will face the initial punishment that they could have had initially, and then they will be subject to any additional consequences and punishment for the subsequent offense. So I think that's an internal motivation, and based on that, we do have, in my experience, maybe, I would guess, maybe ten percent who don't successfully get through it and are back before the court for a probation revocation or an additional hearing to determine why they didn't successfully complete either the community service or they've committed another offense. And normally, the court is more lenient with an offender if it's a question of they're unable to pay, say, all of the fine amount within the twelve months. Then the court has options of converting some of the fines to community service, additional community service work. Or if they have, you know, gone through a drug evaluation but haven't done the follow-up treatment in completely, we can extend the time perhaps, and if they're showing, showing that they've, they're motivated to continue and that there are adequate reasons why they perhaps weren't able to complete whatever they were supposed to do in the timeframe allowed. So we have ways to deal with repeat or violators within the mechanisms of the program. I hope that answers your question.
It does, thank you. Yeah, I think the important point is everybody realize this is a, you know, this is a first offender program, and they're still punished, but it just allows them to work through that to where they won't have a permanent record. So as our solicitor said, if they get in trouble again, then it's all, it's all called off, so.
And I also didn't answer the other component of your question, which was, do other cities or jurisdictions use this type of program? The answer is yes. Each city does it a little differently. They might call it something else, but pretty much every court that I'm aware of has some type of diversion program generally for first offenders. And I think that we should not look to other, we shouldn't look out there and say, well, we're going to look weak, we're going to look like we're not hard on crime here in Milton. I don't think that's the case at all because I think that we adequately warn these people that we're giving you a chance, but keep in mind, if you screw it up, that's it, and you will be punished fully. So I think the message does seem to get through overall.
Okay, are there any other questions for you?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Fran. We appreciate so much you being here to provide your perspective. Just a couple of quick questions. In terms of subjectivity, I'm assuming that obviously every case, while this can be applied, there is the subjectivity within, obviously, the wisdom of our judges, et cetera, on that particular case. Would that be correct?
True. Usually, the way it works is I'll be the first one to make the evaluation, and of course, I make any, I make just a recommendation to the court. It's ultimately up to the court to review the record as well, look at all the facts and circumstances, and the judge will ultimately sign off on it and add perhaps additional conditions that I may have not thought of or the judge feels are appropriate, and it's sort of an evolving kind of thing. But we do have certain things that if it's a first offender, straight-up shoplifting case, that will generally recommend a certain number of community service hours, a cognitive skills program, a certain fine, and that they have no other, obviously, subsequent offenses. But of course, if the judge feels like I'm recommending twenty-five hours and then he feels it's appropriate to impose fifty hours or take out the community service altogether, of course, that's completely up to the court.
And so it sounds like there's obviously flexibility.
Absolutely.
Tiered approaches so that it's kind of a collective perspective.
Right, it's just not me saying, here's what we're going to do. The judge is all...
And I'm sure judgment wouldn't give the best recommendation.
Obviously, right.
I mean, perhaps that recommendation's ultimately what gets approved every time. In terms of community service, I just want to make sure that the community service would actually take place in Milton.
I think under this particular program, if they're entering into the pre-trial diversion, if that's the thought of the council, I'm thinking along those lines that with maybe, if there are a couple of exceptions that need to be addressed, if there's a, say, a college student who goes to Milledgeville.
Right.
And they are here on Christmas, and they go to the Walmart, and they commit a shoplifting, and they come to court, and we put them in the program. We obviously don't want them not to be in school, so we'll allow the community service in that matter to be performed perhaps where they're in school, like in Milledgeville.
Thank you so much. One thought would just be, obviously, in working with our staff and maybe if there's ideas amongst council, but if there's some specific community service avenues that collectively we could perhaps come up with so that it adds some additional kind of natural consequences that are meaningful, because obviously, the program is targeted to try to help create positive character with our youth.
Obviously.
So perhaps if we could just give some, beyond this evening, if we can give some thought to what that community service would involve, obviously, with your experience and that of our judges also, you know, where do you get that sort of positive response depending on what the violation or offense was? Another quick question is that, obviously, these are first offenders most often. Most often, it sounds like it's an offense that involves just the individual. In the instance that another individual would be involved, does this program effectively allow for input from those others who may have, in their view, have been harmed, to come to the court and provide a different perspective?
Are you speaking of, say, a victim in a case?
Yeah, even if it's a, and I realize that we've got some pretty specific language in terms of which offenses would be considered curable, if you will, or expunged.
Mm-hmm.
But I just wonder if there's the opportunity, if someone else is engaged, for them to provide their input at the time that that evaluation is occurring.
Yes, always. The victim is always given an ample opportunity to come to court, either at the arraignment stage or at the sentencing stage. And as far as I have experienced, both our judges have been more than receptive to allowing any victim in a case, be it a shoplifting, an accident, or any other type of case that we handled, to get up at the podium and say whatever they want to say within reason and express their opinions, beliefs, or desires about what should or shouldn't happen in the case. And of course, again, it's up to the judge to make the final call, but certainly, they have never prohibited or not encouraged any victim or witness in a case to speak their piece.
And again, I assume that those are primarily the exceptions.
And I'd like to, and we've got a heavy agenda tonight, but while we're fortunate enough to have both of our judges here, do either one of our judges want to make any comments to add to our solicitor's presentation, or have you found that this has worked well in the past?
Well, absolutely. I think it's worked well in the past because we've had some form of this type of treatment of cases anyway. This just actually formalizes it and helps everybody understand what they're doing. I also agree with everything that Fran said. We always give a victim the opportunity to speak, and I will tell you that a victim's concern would absolutely influence a judge's decision, so that if a victim thought a person was getting off too light or shouldn't get it because they were harmed and et cetera, we, it doesn't mean we'd absolutely not do it, but we'd certainly take that into consideration, absolutely.
Okay.
And I also find, answer your question, yeah, everybody, including not only municipalities, but also state courts, whether it be Forsyth or Fulton or whatnot, have programs like this as well.
Bill, you got any questions?
Anybody have a specific question for me?
Maybe to both of you. I commend you for coming up with this program. In Forsyth County, I believe it's Judge Jeff Bagby, has a program more oriented towards drug abuse offenders. Do you foresee coming up with a program like this since you've already started this process?
I think this program, for the size of our city and the number of cases that we currently handle, barring something totally unforeseen in the next, you know, couple of years, I think this will satisfy all our needs for now. If it becomes evident by the number of drug cases that we start receiving or something like that, that we need to modify the conditions or add terms to it, then certainly, we can amend and do that as the need arises, I think.
And Judge Bagby, of course, is a Superior Court judge, so therefore, all the drug-type cases he's dealing with are felony cases, felony quantities of marijuana or cocaine or whatever. And also, he's dealing with a lot of repeat drug users, drug sellers, et cetera. Our program might be more akin to what Judge McClellan and Judge Smith do in the state court because they have more similar type cases with DUIs and shopliftings and minor possessions of alcohol, et cetera. So I don't know that we'd ever get to the level of Judge Bagby's just because of the nature of his, the type of charges he deals with.
Right, and I know he's been successful with it.
Right.
Okay. Thank you both for being up here, and I actually also want to thank, I believe it was Judge Hansford that brought this forward.
Yes.
Decided to get forward for our court, so I want to thank you for that, too. If I don't have any more questions, do I have a motion or a second?
Mayor, I have a motion. I would put forward a motion to approve agenda item number zero nine, one zero zero five, and would like to join Councilmember Lusk and thanking those that brought this forward, and just appreciate the future work that you'll be doing in terms of developing a community service sort of program, et cetera.
Second motion.
All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Bailey, a second by Councilmember Lusk. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Will the city clerk please sound the next item?
Item number two is approval of a resolution to authorize the use of the city of Milton Mustang logo by athletic teams playing at Bell Memorial Park pursuant to agreements with the city of Milton. This is agenda item number zero nine, one zero one two. This item was deferred on December twenty-first, two thousand nine, originally presented by Chris Lagerblum, city manager.
Mayor and council, good evening. This was before us on December the twenty-first, and as I indicated at that meeting, we had some information that caused us to do some additional legal review. We've done that legal review, and as a matter of fact, it's still ongoing, and at this meeting, I would like, if you're so inclined, and certainly you can hear from the city attorney, it would be appropriate at this point if there was a motion to table this item, and we'll bring it up in the future if that is an appropriate thing to do.
I just have, you know, the city attorney, have any comments that confirm that?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any additional comments to add, except I think that is a good recommendation. I think that's the prudent thing to do, and I can recommend with the city manager that this matter be tabled.
Okay. Do I have a motion or a document to table this item?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we table Agenda Item 09-1012, approval of a resolution to authorize the use of the city a Mustang logo by athletic teams playing at Bell Memorial Park.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Thurman, second by Councilmember Tark. Is there any discussion?
What question, Mayor?
Councilmember Bailey?
Do we need to have a date, specific time at which this would come back?
Any other things, please?
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes you now, Mr. Lee. Okay, let's move on to new business. City Clerk, please sound the first item.
Item number one is approval of a resolution reappointing Barry L. Zimmerman as Chief Judge of the Municipal Court for the City of Milton, Georgia. Agenda Item Number 10-1019.
I can just interject there before you go on with these. These all have my name on them just because I allowed them to proceed to the agenda, but certainly, as you forward with this, this is going to be a mass appointing fest here as we go through this agenda, certainly with each one. If you want to take the reins and run with it, that'd be fine. I think this is really council and mayor driven.
Okay. Step forward, and I'd love to ask Judge Zimmerman to step forward.
[inaudible]
We're just excited about being in the jury.
Do you want to give another chance to...
We might want to ask you why.
[inaudible]
Okay.
Mayor, I have a motion.
All right. I'm assuming there's no questions for Chris on this. Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 10-1019, approval of a resolution reappointing Barry L. Zimmerman as Chief Judge of the Municipal Court for the City of Milton.
Second motion. A motion by Councilmember Tark, second by Councilmember Lusk.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and, sorry, and do this motion for Judge Hansford also, if we can.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of a resolution reappointing Brian A. Hansford as Associate Judge of the Municipal Court for the City of Milton, Agenda Item 101020.
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Thurman.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I'm going to ask both judges to step forward, but I don't know if anybody noticed, but there wasn't much discussion. Everybody's kind of, didn't want to discuss about the judges. A little scared of them. They're sitting on the wrong side. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Barry Zimmerman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will, that I will well and truly conduct myself.
That I will well and truly conduct myself.
As Municipal Court Judge.
As Municipal Court Judge.
Of the City of Milton for the ensuing term.
For the ensuing term.
That I will faithfully enforce the charter.
That I will faithfully enforce the charter.
And ordinances of the City of Milton.
And ordinances of the City of Milton.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Without fear or favor.
Without fear or favor.
That I am not the holder of any unaccounted public money.
That I am not the holder of any unaccounted public money.
Due the state.
Due the state.
Or any political subdivision or authority thereof.
Or any political subdivision or authority thereof.
And in all my actions as City Municipal Court Judge.
And in all my actions as City Municipal Court Judge.
Act as I believe for the best interest of the City of Milton.
Act as I believe for the best interest of the City of Milton.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Judge Hansford, if you raise your right hand. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Brian A. Hansford.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will, that I will well and truly conduct myself.
That I will well and truly conduct myself.
As Municipal Court Judge.
As Municipal Court Judge.
Of the City of Milton for the ensuing term.
Of the City of Milton for the ensuing term.
That I will faithfully, faithfully enforce the charter and ordinances of the City of Milton.
That I will faithfully enforce the charter and ordinances of the City of Milton.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Without fear or favor.
Without fear or favor.
That I am not the holder.
That I am not the holder.
Of any unaccounted public money due the state.
Of any unaccounted public money due the state.
Or any political subdivision or authority thereof.
Or any political subdivision or authority thereof.
And in all my actions as City Municipal Court Judge.
And in all my actions as City Municipal Court Judge.
Act as I believe for the best interest of the City of Milton.
Act as I believe for the best interest of the City of Milton.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. And I do want to thank our judges, even though it's a, I guess I could say slightly paid position, it surely doesn't cover what their time is worth and all the effort they put in, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, the City Clerk, please sound the next item.
Item number three is approval of a resolution appointing Suti Gordon as interim city clerk. This is Agenda Item Number 10-1021.
He counts, I guess I'll take this one of the couple. This is more of a housekeeping issue, obviously, with the departure of our clerk. It is appropriate because that is a chart of creative position to have continuity of operations. This allows for the business of the city to continue to be conducted. We'll explore the permanent solution for this particular position as we navigate through the next couple of months, but this is just an action I believe we need to take to continue operations.
Okay. Is there any questions for Chris on this? Okay, do I have a motion in the second?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution appointing Suti Gordon as interim city clerk, Agenda Item Number 101021.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have, no, I have a motion by Councilmember Lusk, second by Councilmember Thurman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, Suti Gordon, step forward. I'll give you the oath. Raise your right hand, please. Aye, Suti Gordon, do solemnly swear.
Aye, Suti Gordon, do solemnly swear.
And affirm that I will faithfully perform.
And affirm that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of interim city clerk.
The duties of interim city clerk.
Of the city and that I will support and defend.
Of the city and that I will support and defend.
The charter thereof.
The charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution and laws.
As well as the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Georgia.
Of the state of Georgia.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
Welcome aboard. Okay, will the City Clerk, please, sound the next item?
Item number four is approval of a resolution, amending resolution Number 08-04-33, a resolution reappointing members to the City of Milton Board of Zoning Appeals. This is Agenda Item Number 10-1022.
Do we have any questions from our council? Okay, do I have a motion in the second?
Mayor, I move to approve Agenda Item Number 10-1022.
Okay, I have a second.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Tark, second by Councilmember Hewitt. Do we have any discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. At this point, if we have any members of our BZA here, I will give the oath, because I believe the, even existing members have to be re-
They do.
Have to be sworn in. So do we have any members of the BZA here tonight?
Gary Willis, Marsha Parsons, Walt Recocker, Nancy Plonarsky.
Okay. If they're, if they're not here, I can swear them in at any, at any time. It's convenient, you know, before their meeting or they can come by the hall. Okay, will the City Clerk, please, sound the next item?
Approval of a resolution, amending resolution Number 09-05-94, a resolution reappointing members to the City of Milton Advisory Committee for the City of Milton Comprehensive Plan Update. This is Agenda Item Number 10-1023.
Any questions for staff members?
Mayor, I have, I have one question. The resolution title itself contains Mr. Ragsdale's name, but the resolution doesn't give reference to his name unless I'm missing something.
Good point. That, remove that from the title, Councilmember. That's...
Okay.
He serves on that committee vicariously through appointment on a different committee.
Yep. Do I have any other questions? Do I have a motion in the second?
Mayor, I'll put forward a motion to approve a resolution, amending resolution Number 090594, a resolution reappointing members to the City of Milton Advisory Committee for the City of Milton Comprehensive Plan Update. Agenda Item Number 10-1023.
I'll second it. That's corrected.
That's what I was going to ask Councilmember Lusk about, if we just have any reference to, to George Ragsdale being on.
Absolutely. And the amendment to that approval, as stated by Councilmember Musk, would be to simply remove from the title reference to George Ragsdale because he serves based on an appointment from a prior or a different committee.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion second. Do I have any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, do we have any members?
I should have said that that was Councilmember Tark. Thank you, Mr. Lusk, for making sure I did that. Thank you.
Do we have any members here tonight that need to be sworn in?
Yes, we do.
I believe I've seen all four of them.
Okay. If those members would step forward, please.
No, I've seen Mark Lee.
He's not outside, is he? Because he was just here.
Is he here?
Yeah, I've seen Mark Lee. Did he have to leave? You'll be sworn in at the Planning Commission and not at this one.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
Faithfully perform the duties of.
The Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee member.
Of the Plan Advisory Committee.
Of the city.
Of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
Support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
Thank you guys for your prior service and your future service to us. I think Councilmember Tark had a question.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask you guys, is this consistent with the way we've done it in the past as far as those members that are on other boards that are a part of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee, kind of by default because they're on other boards? They don't get sworn in for this board? Is that the way we did in the past?
Well, yes, it is, because it's specifically called out in the resolution that created the Planning Commission, for example, as well as the one that created CPAC, how members fluctuate between them.
Okay, all right, that works.
So, Mr. Moore, for example, would be a member of the Planning Commission, but if you read that resolution's language, it appoints him because of that position to CPAC.
Got you. Okay, will the City Clerk, please, sound the next item?
Item number six, approval of a resolution, amending resolution Number 08-02-10, a resolution reappointing members to the City of Milton Construction Board of Adjustment and Appeals. This is Agenda Item Number 10-1024.
Okay, is there any questions from council? Do I have a motion in the second?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 10-1024.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Tark, second by Councilmember Hewitt. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Do we have any members?
Any more? Terry Herr, Jim Brown, and Mark Meckes? Mark Meckes.
Yeah, and I think Terry's here, yeah. If you guys will raise your right hand, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
The Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals.
Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals.
Committee member.
Committee member.
Of the city.
Of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I also want to apologize for those that are waiting to be sworn in. It's, we've got to, got to move through these as quick as possible. We have a, fortunately, we've got a lot of volunteers in Milton, a lot of volunteer boards, so I'm grateful for that. So we'll try to move on as quick as we can here. All right, will the City Clerk, please, sound the next item?
Item number seven, approval of a resolution, amending resolution Number 09-11-110, a resolution reappointing members to the City of Milton Design Review Board. This is Agenda Item Number 10-1025.
Any questions from council? All right, do I have a motion in the second?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 10-1025.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Thurman. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Do we have any members?
Any more? Terry Herr, Jim Brown, and Mark Meckes? Mark Meckes.
Yeah, and I think Terry's here, yeah. If you guys will raise your right hand, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of Design Review Board member.
The duties of the Design Review Board.
Duty of the Design Review Board member of the city.
Of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Thank you. You guys can sign. Okay, will the City Clerk, please, sound the next item?
Item number eight, approval of a resolution, amending resolution Number 09-08-10, a resolution reappointing members to the City of Milton Design Review Board. This is Agenda Item Number 10-1025.
Any questions from council? All right, do I have a motion in the second?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 10-1025.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Thurman. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Do we have any members?
Any more? Terry Herr, Jim Brown, and Mark Meckes? Mark Meckes.
Yeah, and I think Terry's here, yeah. If you guys will raise your right hand, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of Design Review Board member.
The duties of the Design Review Board.
Duty of the Design Review Board member of the city.
Of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Thank you. You guys can sign.
Item number eight, approval of a resolution, amending resolution Number 09-. Item number eight, approval of a resolution amending resolution number zero nine dash zero four dash three zero. A resolution reappointing members to the City of Milton Planning Commission. This is agenda item number ten dash ten twenty six.
Any questions for staff on this one? Okay, do I have a motion in second?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve agenda item number one zero dash one zero two six.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion by councilmember Tark, second by councilmember Bailey. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Do we have members of the Planning Commission?
This is Paul Moore, Joe Kramer, George Ragsdale, and Chris Doty.
If you would raise your right hand, please. I do solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of Planning Commission Committee Member of the city and that I will support and defend the charter thereof as well as the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America. Congratulations again. The City Clerk, please sound the next item.
Item number nine, approval of a resolution amending resolution number zero eight dash zero four dash three six. A resolution reappointing members to the City of Milton Ethics Board. This is agenda item number ten dash ten twenty seven.
Okay, and I believe I need to, my first one. Because yours is listed as to be determined, you should just add it at this point.
Okay. I'd like to add, I have a new member that I would like to get approved for my appointee to the Ethics Committee Board. I'm proud to, to appoint Paul Marcello. And Paul and his wife, they have moved here, what, about six, six months ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, and he is, he's general counsel and secretary of Bluebird Corporation, school bus, school bus company, and North American Bus Industries. He's, he's got, let's see, his wife Sharon, they got three daughters, Lauren, Kristen, and Renee. They came from Midland, Michigan to Milton, and Lauren's a college student at Dennison University in Ohio. Kristen and Renee are students at Milton High School. And Paul had, I'd met with Paul, and he expressed a desire to get involved with the city. And in looking at his resume and experience, I thought this was a good fit. So, I'm pleased to bring him forward and appreciate his, his help with the city, so. Any questions from council? Hearing none. Do I have a motion in second?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve agenda item one zero dash one zero two seven as recommended by staff with the addition of Mr. Paul Marcello as the at-large nominee in section one of the resolution.
I'll second the motion.
And a motion by councilmember Tark, second by councilmember Bailey. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, at this point, I would like to have Paul step forward.
Paul, mayor, you also have Courtney White, Clint Johnson, and Jerry Stevens.
Okay, if you raise your right hand, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Ethics Board Committee Member of the city and that I will support and defend the charter thereof as well as the Constitution and the laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America.
Congratulations. Thank you.
This is the Ethics Committee, one, one committee that's important, we're glad to have, but it's one that you don't want to have to view, so. Alright, will the City Clerk please sound the next item?
Item number ten, approval of a resolution amending resolution number zero nine dash zero four dash eight nine. A resolution reappointing members to the City of Milton Highway Nine Design Guideline Committee. This is agenda item number ten dash ten twenty eight.
Okay, is there any questions? Not, do I have a motion in second?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a resolution amending resolution number zero niner dash zero four dash eight niner. A resolution reappointing members to the City of Milton Highway Nine Design Guideline Committee. Agenda item number one zero dash one zero two eight.
Okay, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by councilmember Musk, second by councilmember Thurman. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
No, Adam is here. Mayor, I've seen a couple of these folks. Dennis Potter, Rick Moore, John McMillan, Rodney Reese, Adam Orkin, and Paul Morefleet.
Okay, those that are here, please step forward. If you guys would raise your right hand, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Highway Nine Design Guideline Committee Member of the city and that I will support and defend the charter thereof as well as the Constitution and the laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America. Okay, will the City Clerk please sound the next item?
Item number eleven, approval of a resolution amending resolution number zero nine dash zero one dash seven two. A resolution reappointing members to the City of Milton Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. This is agenda item number ten dash ten twenty nine.
Okay, first, is there any questions for staff? And also, at this point, I need to bring forward a, my appointee, new appointee for Parks and Rec. I would like to nominate for my appointee, Mr. Jack Flowers. Jack's lived in Milton since 2005 after an absence of 13 years. He's worked in the Milton Horse Community, both as a manager and riding school director at Pleasant Hill on Bethany Way, and now an independent professional. He holds a BA in History and an MA in International Affairs and teaches history classes at Georgia Perimeter College. He's also had the pleasure of coaching Little League Soccer, and I'm excited and proud to nominate Jack as my appointee. Any questions? Okay, do I have a motion in second?
I'd make a motion to approve agenda item number ten dash ten twenty nine.
I'll second it.
A motion by councilmember Hewitt, second by councilmember Thurman. Any discussion?
Just one little thing. Just before you post this on the web, you might want to create the typo in the title of the resolution, the spelling of Ms. Jackson's last name.
Councilmember, you're good. Yes, you are.
What's that?
I said, you're good. Yes, you are. Alright, we got it.
We need to hire him. Okay, I believe I got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. I'm going to ask Mr. Flowers to step forward, and I'll administer this oath.
The other ones that are here, if they're here, Mark Reed, Lauren Jackson, and Scott Stahusky.
Okay, if you both would raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Member of the city and that I will support and defend the charter thereof as well as the Constitution and the laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America. Congratulations. Okay, will the City Clerk please sound the next item?
Item number twelve, approval of a resolution amending resolution number zero eight dash zero four dash three four. A resolution reappointing members to the Citizens Participation Group for potential revision to the Milton Tree Ordinance and Administrative Guidelines. This is agenda item number ten dash ten thirty.
Okay, is there any questions? Okay, do I have a motion in a second?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve agenda item ten dash ten dash thirty. Resolution, amending resolution, appointing or reappointing members to the Citizens Participation Group for potential revision to the Milton Tree Ordinance.
Second motion.
I have a motion by councilmember Thurman, second by councilmember Musk. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
This is Zach Middlebrooks, Scott Groenholm, Adam Orkin, and I think Adam is here, and I don't see Roger either, so.
If you raise your right hand, I do solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Milton Tree Committee Member of the city and that I will support and defend the charter thereof as well as the Constitution and the laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America. No problem. Thank you for your help and service so far. If you'd raise your right hand, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Highway, the Highway Nine Design Guideline Committee Member of the city and that I will support and defend the charter thereof as well as the Constitution and the laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America. Thank you, Rodney. I also want to congratulate Mr. Reese here on having absolutely probably the perfect smartest timing of anybody here in the audience. Okay, will the City Clerk please sound the next item?
Agenda item thirteen, approval of a resolution amending resolution number zero nine dash zero three dash eight five. A resolution reappointing members to Advisory Committee for the City of Milton Concept Plans for the Intersections of Birmingham at Providence and Arnold Mill at New Providence. Agenda item number ten dash ten thirty one.
Okay, do we have any questions on this? Not, do I have a motion in second?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve a resolution reappointing members to the Advisory Committee for the City of Milton Concept Plans for the Intersection of Birmingham at Providence and Arnold Mill at New Providence. Agenda item number ten dash ten thirty one.
Second. Okay. I have a motion by councilmember Thurman, and I'm going to definitely give the second to councilmember Longoria. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous. Okay, do we have any of our members here?
Kathy Kevin O'Sullivan and Mike Stevens.
If you guys would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Advisory Committee for the City of Milton Concept Plans for the intersection of Birmingham and Providence and Arnold Mill at New Providence. Member and, and that I will support and defend the charter thereof as well as the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America as well as the laws of the state of Georgia. Thank you very much. The City Clerk, please sound the next item.
Agenda item number fourteen, approval of a resolution amending resolution number zero nine dash eleven dash one eleven. A resolution reappointing members to the City of Milton Transportation Stakeholders Advisory Committee. Agenda item number ten dash ten thirty two.
Any questions on this item? Not, do I have a motion and a second?
I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item number ten, ten thirty-two.
Do you have a second?
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Watts. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimous.
This is Bruce Smitherman, Steve Beecham, Dashiell Barnes, and Mike Stevens.
Okay. You guys would raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear and confirm That I will faithfully perform the duties of The stakeholder advisory committee member Of the city And that I will support and defend the charter thereof As well as the Constitution And the laws of the state of Georgia And the United States of America. Thank you. The City Clerk, please sound the next item.
This is item number fifteen, approval of a resolution amending resolution number zero eight dash zero four dash three two, a resolution reappointing members to the city of Milton Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. This is agenda item number ten dash ten thirty-three.
Okay, any questions on this item? All right, do I have a motion and a second?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve resolution amending resolution number oh eight dash oh four dash three two, a resolution reappointing members to the city of Milton Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. This is agenda item number ten dash ten thirty-three.
Okay, any questions on this item? All right, do I have a motion and a second?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve resolution amending resolution number oh eight dash oh four thirty-two, a resolution reappointing members to the city of Milton Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Thurman, second by Councilmember Bailey. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimous.
This is Bill Shellhorn, Ellen Tetley, Andy Carr, and Travis Allen.
I believe anyone's here. This one? All right, well, the City Clerk, please sound the next item.
This is agenda item sixteen, approval of a resolution amending resolution number zero nine, zero four nine one, a resolution reappointing members to the historic preservation committee for development of a historic preservation ordinance for the city of Milton. Agenda item number ten dash ten thirty-four.
Okay, is there any questions?
So, do you have anybody to add yet?
I do not. Okay, is there any questions? Do I have a motion and a second?
Mayor, I move to approve agenda item ten dash ten thirty-four.
Second the motion.
I have a motion by Councilmember Tark, second by Councilmember Watts. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
This is Gordon Hunter, James Ferris, Norman Broadwell, Brian Beech, Travis Allen, and J.T.
Okay. I saw Norman. Gordon was here. We don't have anybody here. We'll have to swear them in at a later day. Okay, well, City Clerk, please sound the next item.
Item number seventeen, approval of a resolution to provide for the appointment of individuals to Milton Grows Green's governing board and for other designated purposes. This is agenda item number ten dash ten thirty-five.
Mayor and Council, I'll start this one off, and I'm going to say it right here at the very beginning, individuals is spelled wrong in the title. It will be corrected.
Well, the last paragraph to approve, but...
Well, okay, now I got to look at John McPhail. I'm just kidding. This is a kind of a housekeeping resolution, and I'm not really here tonight to do a lot of presenting of it, other than to say that their initial enabling resolution provided for a mechanism by which new governing board members would be appointed to their group, and that new appointees or for people that were having a difficult time serving could come before the council and seek your approval for the new board members. It was the co-chair of that group that brought forward the request to get this in front of the council for your approval based on some direction and decisions that they had made in their particular board. That's really what this is a function of. If anybody has any questions or anybody has any further comments, in fact, Mr. McPhail is even here in the audience as well, who is one of the co-chairs, who was the author of this and the next resolution. Give any questions for him as well. He's available and could potentially answer them. Councilmember Zonner, do you have anything to add?
I'll just echo your point, is that this and the next are both housekeeping, and they are indeed consistent with the original authorizing language. And this is just a housekeeping issue. The Board of Governors had just a couple of positions where those folks couldn't serve, one due to help and one with the change of their business position. And the three folks that that Board of Governors approved are in fact folks that have been very engaged for the last year, with Bruce Langston also joining them from District Four, Wilson Borden in District Three, and Kathy Johnson in District Two. Again, they're some of the folks that are helping to make Milton grows green a successful organization. So, housekeeping and the folks are the folks that have been helping to do the work.
Okay, have any other questions on this?
Mayor, we do have one request from our city attorney, and that is if somebody does make a motion to approve this resolution, that after, on the second page, in the end of the sentence that starts, and be a further resolve, that future governing board members shall be appointed to serve two-year terms beginning December first, such that one-half the governing board will begin their terms on each December first, comma, and that this shall be deemed an amendment to resolution zero eight dash one zero dash four six. If you would include that in your motion, I would appreciate it, the request of our city attorney.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item ten, ten thirty-five, with the comments that the city manager just made.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, as stated and amended, and a second by Councilmember Thurman. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous. Okay, and the City Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is approval of a resolution requesting that keep Georgia beautiful and keep America beautiful, accept and recognize Milton Grows Green as the city of Milton's affiliate for those programs and for other designated purposes. This is agenda item number ten dash ten thirty-six.
Mayor and Council, I'll start this one again. This dates back a little while, with some direction that we gave to our Milton Grows Green group, was to pursue their possibility of becoming our affiliate to keep America beautiful. KAB is a national group and has affiliate programs, has affiliate outreach organizations into many parts of the state as well as the nation. And in their exploration of becoming Milton's affiliate to keep America beautiful, this was one of the precursors that basically publicly launches, I guess, the city's support and the council's support of this particular group pursuing that designation. It seems to me to be the right thing to do, in that we have a group of very active people who are dedicated to our city, who want to work for our city, and the pay that we pay them is perfect, because to figure out how we find help, because they're very diligent volunteers. And that having been said, this resolution is simply kind of affirming your position or the position of the city, that Milton Grows Green should continue to explore becoming Milton's keep America beautiful affiliate. Again, Councilmembers, I'm going to be, anything that I have left out?
I'll just echo what you said. The only additional thing I would state is that it will allow, obviously, the pursuit of potential grants, which would help in a whole variety of issues, whether that be community education or specific programming that, of course, the mayor, council, and staff would support. Again, a housekeeping item that just allows that good work and those volunteers and those involved to continue.
Okay, is there any other questions from council on this item?
I had one quick question. I had emailed Chris when I was watching one of the bowl games earlier this week about the Disney having a program that says, "Give a Day, Get a Day," and Disney actually will give you a free pass for volunteers. Whether or not that's something that this needs to be done through this committee?
Well, that's, it certainly possibly could. I've taken, on behalf of the city, I've taken the first steps to see if we even qualify under that program. There's actually an application process that went into the Give a Day, Get a Day, and I have completed the application and have submitted it. They have come back and asked for something on official letterhead, basically describing what our functions are as a city government, and I faxed that in, it went to a 202 area code, so I'm guessing somewhere in Washington, DC yesterday. I should hear back by email as to whether or not we're approved for the program and actually qualify under their Get a Day, Get a Day. I can't see why we wouldn't.
If we don't, though, if we don't qualify as a city, then maybe could the Milton Grows Green Committee qualify under this?
I read the six possible categories of people that were able to apply, and when it got into government, it was really Parks and Recreation programs or governments that sponsor, the government itself that sponsors a volunteer effort. The other ways to get involved were if you were a 501(c)(3) charitable type. So, really, the only two avenues I saw us pursuing on the available options, I elected to pursue the option for volunteer service. I don't see, again, why we wouldn't get approved, but knowing that I had to fax something in means somebody's got to put eyes on it and make an actual decision. That's probably going to take a little bit of time to do, but we're in the pipeline to see if we're approved.
Okay, I just thought that would be a good thing, if our volunteers could get a free day at Disney.
It's a great suggestion.
Yeah. And I just didn't know if, when you're planning it for next year, remember that. It may have a little extra incentive.
And I think those are exactly the sorts of programs that increasingly, so any ideas like that, please provide those to Milton Grows Green. Again, it's an amazing group of citizens that care very much about this entire city, and we just need to continue to leverage the efforts of the collective many. So, thank you to all of those who are in the audience and those that indeed are not even here, but I think you know how much I appreciate all that you do.
Okay, is there any more questions? If not, do I have a motion and a second?
Mayor, I move that we approve agenda item number ten dash ten thirty-six.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Longoria, a second by Councilmember Thurman. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimous. I guess, wow.
Mayor?
Okay.
This is a point of consideration since we are here this evening, and I know it's just going to take a few more minutes, but we have a number of folks from Milton Grows Green. It would be opportune if we could swear them in, potentially, just because that needs to happen. I know that Kathy Johnson is not here, but Bruce Langston is here, Wilson Borden is here, as well as John and Francia and Jack London, so...
We can do that if, Mayor, I'm going to hand you this one, and I'm going to write on it real quick.
Yes. I can do it.
Because we know how tough it is to get so many people in one place in one evening, who have been so patient for so long.
Think even if I sign a blank piece of paper, it's worth it for these folks that have stayed here all night.
I'm going to get some.
Some recycled paper.
I was just going to say, no, that's what I was going to say.
By way of explanation, two of our new governing board members are here to be sworn in, and Jack London and I offered ourselves to be reappointed, so that we have half the board reappointed every year. So, if you could make us official again, I appreciate that. Wilson Borden and Bruce Langston are the two new members. I'm proud to say we've got any member from District Four, which we've struggled for a long time to achieve.
You guys would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm That I will faithfully perform the duties of
That I will faithfully perform the duties of
The Milton Grows Green Committee Of the city And that I will support and defend the charter thereof
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof
As well as the Constitution
As well as the Constitution
And the laws of the state of Georgia
And the laws of the state of Georgia
And of the United States of America
And of the United States of America
Congratulations. All right, we're going to move on to council reports. Again, I just want to reiterate what I said earlier about our staff. I'm excited, I think the council's excited, and I really see some enthusiasm and spark here at City Hall, and I'm looking forward to a great 2010. So, I want to thank all of our staff. I'm really proud to be associated with you guys, so just want to thank you for all your hard work and everything that you've given to Milton, so. Do I have some, any council members that want to report on something? I think Councilmember Bailey, you've got something?
Yes, Mayor, thank you so much. Just very quickly, I wanted to extend an invitation to the community members here, as well as to council and mayor. Next Thursday, which will be the fourteenth of January at seven o'clock PM, Northwestern Middle School is promoting and helping to sponsor what's called Rachel's Challenge. And Rachel is the name of the young woman in 1999 that was the first student to be killed, unfortunately, at the Columbine High School. And Rachel's Challenge is a program that has been embraced by the administration, staff, teachers of Northwestern Middle as an outreach program to help bring positive character development and value structure to not just the youth of our community, and of course, not just the youth of Northwestern, but broadly the community regardless of age. And Bruce Fraser, the principal of Northwestern, and the administration would gladly have all of us, all of you, attend that at seven o'clock on the fourteenth, if you're able. That program is going to be the first of an extended program and reach out from Northwestern to other students, to other schools. And I have a press release that I'll give each of you, just to give you a bit more detail about it. I'll also provide that to our staff and to our communication director. But it's really an important step, I think, not just for the school, but for the community. And I think it also speaks to what we heard from our judges and from Fran Schouenthal earlier about the need to embrace our youth and do whatever we can to come up with solutions that will help them to make better decisions each and every day. So, it's a very exciting program, and it stemmed from some writings of this young woman that was killed. And premonition would be incorrect, but some of her statements, and I'll just read a quote from her that her parents found later after her death and after her passing, and it says, "Rachel Joy Scott wrote, quote, 'I have this theory that if one person can go out of their way to show compassion, that it will start a chain reaction of the same. People will never know how far a little kindness can go.'" And this young woman predicted that she would have an impact on millions, and indeed she has. And fortunately, it was the result of her death through this very unfortunate situation. But from that, not only can Northwestern Middle School, as one of our shining schools in our entire community, along with many others, I think that we as a city can help them and help all of those that live within the walls of Milton to reach out and to become part of that chain reaction. And so, I just would encourage us as a committee, I'm sorry, as a council, and as a city and staff, anybody that could, please do attend. And there's more information that'll follow, but I think there's an opportunity for us as a city to also really embrace this whole premise of a chain reaction. I think we've got an opportunity, as the mayor said in 2010, to really bring some amazing and very positive things to our city, and I think this is just one shining example. So, I'd encourage you guys to be there. It's January fourteenth at seven PM. Earlier in the day, we'll be having some student-centered activities, but it's, and this program has been taken to different states, to different countries, and millions of students and youth and parents and other youth groups have now participated. I would encourage, and in fact, maybe the HYA board can help be part of that communication exchange. I'll be sending out some information, again, our staff will have this information as well, and I'll give this now to everybody. I should have given it to you a little bit earlier. But it's just a very positive outreach program, and the more of us that can help and the more of us that can help to communicate this, I think, the better. And so I think the chain of acts of kindness is surely something that I believe in deeply, and I look forward to you guys participating.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Any other reports from council? Again, I want to just also say welcome Mr. Longoria. We're looking forward to working together with you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Do I have reports from our city manager and staff?
Mayor, council, just a couple. If you've seen a couple of emails. One, I sent an email yesterday that dealt with a Parks and Recreation needs assessment. I don't know if you spotted that one yet or not. I've not had very many responses, so my guess is maybe you haven't spotted it yet. I did get a response from Councilmember Lusk, so at least I know it left the building. You can...
In speaking with our wonderful IT director, I've realized that with the changeover, I perhaps have not seen that simple...
Wrong one.
Yes.
I was just going to tell you that I'm planning on adding it to a discussion item for next week's work session. So if you see it, please read it, take it to heart, but there's going to be some discussion on it that happens next week. Number two is, if you haven't seen that one, you probably haven't seen the email today, which is fine. The email that I sent today indicated that you would get some type of a letter tonight at the meeting that talked about the culmination of the CH2M Hill transition. That remains in a almost complete but still very working draft form, and I just want to make sure before I give it to you that every bit of information in it is defendable with data and facts. It's 98% complete, so if you're waiting for it before midnight tonight, you're probably not going to get it, but I'll tell you it is first on the agenda tomorrow. Also keep in mind that it is still a working draft. It's not a, this is going to be a working draft communication to the mayor and council from your city manager. So just keep that in the spirit in which it's intended. I want you to have hard data before everybody else has hard data. I just think that's appropriate, so look for that, please, coming tomorrow, so you at least spend some time reading it and digesting kind of what we now have discovered with respect to the transition. That's all I have, Mayor.
So? Okay. The city clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is executive session to discuss potential litigation.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd be in motion on that, we expand that to include land acquisition and personnel to cover all bases, but Mayor, I...
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Lusk?
I move that we adjourn the regular session and move to the executive session to discuss pending litigation, land acquisition, and personnel.
Second motion. Okay. I got a motion from Councilmember Lusk and a second from Councilmember Longoria.
Or Tark.
It's all right? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pass as unanimous.
Thank you, citizens of the mayor.
Yeah. Thank you guys for sticking with us tonight, and we appreciate you being here. There's someone else.
To reconvene the meeting.
I'll second it.
Hang on, here, here they come.
Is there a motion to reconvene?
Okay, you should just sit.
Don't go in to sit here.
Our mayor pro tem is gonna take over.
Give me that gavel.
Do I have a motion to second that we reconvene the meeting?
Some moves.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Mr. Mayor, I'm moved to adjourn the regular meeting of Milton City Council Wednesday, January 6th, 2000.
I'll second the motion.